On item B eight with City Attorney Kyle Finnell and Assistant City Attorney Michael Reyes. Here to present information only discussion regarding proposed updates to BMC Chapter nine dot thirty two entitled unauthorized.
Thank you. So um. I'm going to direct your attention in your packet to the publication prepared by MRSC and the Association of Washington Cities entitled. The homelessness and housing toolkit for cities. It's the twenty twenty two version. This is a periodic publication. And this is the most recent one available. For me, I download the packet from the website and it's at page thirty three for me. And I did not include this as a mistake. I included it in its entirety because I think it's a really good visual. Reminder of what we're here to talk about and what we're not here to talk about tonight. And so. You'll notice from the table of contents, it starts at page one thirty five. And I'll give you guys all a chance to get there. This is a large document. There's approximately sixty pages and it's divided into. You know, there's an introduction. There's a section on funding. There's a section on homelessness. There's a section on affordable housing. Tenant protections and innovative collaboration. And then, of course, their acknowledgements and stuff. But the reason I wanted to include this is because if you'll notice. Homelessness and the limits of enforcement under homelessness starts at page eight of the publication. Is just one little line in all of these different topics and. A reason I'm pointing that out is that to sort of focus the conversation on the council's task of mending this ordinance. And as a kind of also a visual reminder that there's a lot of other work. Being done that you've undertaken, that you've supported with regard to these other issues. And that this discussion, the ordinance, is just one piece of. The entire process for affordable housing and addressing homelessness in our community. Certainly encourage you to all take a look at the publication in its entirety if you haven't read it before. But for the purpose of tonight's discussion and as we go through this process of updating the code. We're really only going to be focused on the pages that are talking about homelessness and the limits of enforcement. And that starts at page eight. So if you could kind of go to that section. I'm going to talk about why we're here tonight. And. I feel like this is a pretty good explanation of what's going on. You'll see when you get to the page eight of this publication. It talks about. Various topics and the first one that you see right there in ball is Martin versus city of Boise. That's a Ninth Circuit case. We're in the Ninth Circuit, state of Washington is. That the Ninth Circuit declared unconstitutional for the city of Boise to enforce. Its ordinance prohibiting camping in public places against people experiencing homeless at times homelessness at times. When there was no shelter space available. And so that was a case that. A lot of cities on the West Coast, including, you know, all the cities in Washington, were certainly taking note of because that that ordinance that Boise had was very similar. To ordinances that are in place all across the country. And so. That's what the court ruled was unconstitutional. However. The court did set some limits on the scope of its decision. And if you notice right there in the middle of that page, it goes into a list. It goes one, two, three. And that's really what I want to talk about. And there's four things. It doesn't cover individuals who have access to adequate temporary shelter but choose not to use it. So the focus of the decision is on involuntary. Houselessness homelessness. It is not. The scope does not extend to people who simply are making that choice to to not access temporary shelter. Additionally. When shelter is unavailable. An ordinance may prohibit certain things at certain times or in certain locations. And we're going to get into that later when Michael talks about what other cities have done in response to this. Additionally, an ordinance can prohibit obstructions of the right of way or certain types of structures. As a part of an ordinance and that an ordinance is consistent with the Eighth Amendment, whether it is will. Depend on whether it punishes a person for lacking the means to live out the universal and unavoidable consequences of being human. And that's the quote from the Ninth Circuit. The city of Boise did petition the Supreme Court referral review that was declined. And so the Ninth Circuit law stands. There was another case that is not mentioned in this that came out more recently. It was at the end of twenty twenty two. That reinforced a lot of the holdings in Martin v. City of Boise. And it's my understanding that they have petitioned the city in that case, which is. Grants pass is petition for additional review by the Ninth Circuit and the decision has not been made on that yet. So. More to come. But in the interim, really what we're here to talk about are these four points and. That's kind of going to be the focus of this exercise of at what point are we going to limit? The use of the public. Areas, public right of way parks, that kind of stuff, public property, public space. And how it interacts with those who are experiencing homelessness. I did want to just. If you go onto the next page, and this is at one forty five, there's also discussions on searches, on vehicles. I'm not going to be touching on that too much, but I did want to draw your attention to panhandling regulations, which is that it's my page one forty six. You may recall that last year we did deal with this already. We repealed our section that we thought was not in line with the holding in Willis. And so just, you know, the council has already been undertaking this work. And this is just an extension of that work continuing to go forward to make sure that our codes are in line with case law. And so. To help you with that decision, what we have planned for tonight is that Michael's going to talk about what other cities have done. In response to these decisions and how they've revised their codes. We've got examples from city of Longview, the city of Lakewood, as well as. City of Portland, which had a really publicized revision to their code in recent weeks. And then those are certainly not. The only ones who have done updates. It's been pretty common for cities to be looking at this. Our plan is to talk to you about those, answer questions. It's the item is currently set for the fifth for public comment only. We are. Coming at you with a proposed ordinance. We really are hoping to draft this with you guys with input from the public. And then we would come back to a study session on the twelfth, talk again about what we all learned from the public comment piece. At that point, Michael and I will start getting ideas together of what this council, this community wants to see in an ordinance. And then my goal would be that we hopefully have. At least something then to consider for presentation on the nineteenth, but certainly opening up to. Other ideas and timelines if the public comment means that that's what's required for this. So. That's kind of the introduction. Before I take like kick it over to Michael to talk about the specific examples, does anyone have? Questions or do you want me to?
Sure. I'll take a questions comments on that proposed process or the intro. Yeah. And sorry, I saw Quinn's hand first.
And all the third cases.
You know, it's really not through public safety. So.
Yeah, this was one thing. Yeah, one of the things we talked about, I guess, and that's a good comment and why this isn't going through committee is it really touches on so many different departments and whatnot that. We thought a council as a whole was the best place. So.
My question was, so I know that the Supreme Court denied cert from Boise's appeal. Are there any circuit splits? Are we anticipating that the Supreme Court might pick this issue up?
I don't think that the other circuits have had. A case go up where they've reviewed it. And I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know that if you read. The dissent in the most recent Ninth Circuit case. I would encourage you to read it. It is definitely that it basically says that it should be heard on bond. And that if not, then appealed. And so I don't think that there's any circuit splits right now that I'm aware of. I know the other states are going completely opposite. Completely different directions and.
I would imagine.
Right. Yeah, I had heard this Tennessee had proposed making it a felony to camp in public space.
Thank you for that. I guess my next question is for these elements that the. Ninth Circuit kind of carved out as exceptions other than this, the second case that you mentioned, has there been any ordinances testing? The ability to.
Right.
In the the frames without violating the.
So there have been, I guess, no, not not directly on the nose, I guess, is what I would say. They the approaches are definitely locally crafted. And so what I haven't seen is like a model ordinance come out, which sometimes there are like. For example, when the Supreme Court decided the Reedby town of Gilbert and we co-wired basically all three sign code in the country to be amended. There was. You know, it was a local process, but at the same time, there was kind of the model orders. I haven't seen that. This has definitely been each community sort of looking at their. Situation and what what works best for them and crafting an ordinance to go along with that. And you'll see from even looking like Lakewood and Longwood, which aren't even that far apart, right? Pretty different.
Denise and Jennifer.
I'm feeling a little twinge of. Discussing this, moving forward with this. When we're hearing from the public all the time that we are not providing adequate services. Toilet, whatever we just heard from the library. That they're, you know, the closure of their building. I hadn't even thought of the impact other than programming that they provide. Cooling, shelter and of course restrooms. And so while I'm really interested and want to move forward with this with a good, robust discussion and all of that. I just have to call it out that that this is, I think this could be perceived. As I don't know what the right word is ironic or whatever that that we keep hearing about providing more. Services for the homeless, but we're discussing. You know. Really not criminal, but but taking public action around. Camping and encampments and everything. So I just, I want that on the record that that we really. We really need to to before we get any more aggressive, if we are going to move in that direction. We better know what we're doing as far as providing the adequate support. So. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to what you have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Fry. That was a little bit of what I was going to say, but also Kylie, can you tell me, you said there were four things that you were hoping to discuss? I guess I'm confused by how you want to frame this discussion and what you want to focus on. Can you, I was going through the packet and it was like page five, but no, it's actually page one forty, whatever. So I apologize. I just wasn't able to keep up on all that. So there are four items you'd want us to talk about.
Oh, sure. Okay. Sure. So um. In this MRSC, AWS publication, it's.
Which page? I'm sorry.
One forty four of our packet, but it's page eight of the publication itself.
One forty four, page eight. Got it.
It's everyone. I that's I downloaded mine from the internet. I think so. But. And so on that initial page, it has the title at the top homelessness and the limits of enforcement. There's like three columns of text. Do you see what I'm saying? You know. So in the middle column, if you go down kind of in this way, it says however, in footnote eight, the court stepped forth some limits on the scope of its decision. And these four elements are where cities are adopting codes that are in harmony with the decision. And and not running afoul of the the holding in Martin.
I am just so hesitant to even have this conversation because we have not even. We don't. I mean. I'm just speechless that we haven't figured out services or that we like our administration hasn't figured out how to have. Shelter space like where, you know, and I mean, like, I get that there's like some sanitation and some nuisance like going on and that there are actually. Houses, individuals who are being preyed upon, but I just don't even. I feel uncomfortable having the conversation without having additional resources in place for these folks. Okay, but I see where you're talking about. Thank you for directing me to the correct page. I'll continue my thoughts later.
Heck yeah. And just one thing before we continue from my end, I. Looking at the current Bremerton ordinance. So let me make sure I got it correctly that. The current ordinance as it exists in Bremerton is basically no camping anywhere, anytime for any reason. And so no matter what action we take, it would be a more lax.
Okay.
Policy.
Right. Right now, our code prohibits camping anywhere all the time. That's not okay. And what the Ninth Circuit is saying is that. You can't have a blanket prohibition anywhere all the time. You have to specify, you can, but you can however specify. Certain areas as being no camping anytime, or you could do a time restriction because the Ninth Circuit focused on the act of sleeping. Not just. And Michael will talk about that. Portland kind of took that. That approach recently. And so that was why I was talking about that. And when you'll see that. Particularly point number two, even when shelter is unavailable, an ordinance may prohibit. Sitting, lying or sleeping outside at certain times or in certain locations. And so that mix of times and locations is where. Certain cities have revamped their code so that it is not as broadly prohibited. And instead is narrowly tailored to the uses in their community that they've identified.
Thanks for clarifying that. All right, let's see. I think you could move ahead to Mr. Reyes. Oh, did you have a in that round of the process?
I did, please. I guess my first question is the phrase choose not to use it. As in the first bullet point, number one, under footnote eight. It does not cover individuals who do have access to adequate temporary shelter but choose not to use it. We have a great many. Situations in the city of Bremerton where. It's determined that those who are undergoing a behavioral or mental health crisis are not considered competent. To make a choice of, for example, to stop screaming. So on and so forth. So I'm wondering about how that relates to this.
Sure. So I think what you're asking about is is would the court take into consideration a person's competency? In determining whether or not their exercise of not going to shelter. And I don't think in. The analysis that the court was looking at and in the choosing not to. Didn't specifically look at that element. It was more about whether or not the person had a place that they could go. And if they did, then the city was then at that point, I guess, able to enforce their ordinance. Against that person because the. Eighth Amendment, so it was not implicated when the person had a choice in the matter. It was the lack of. Shelter space and they're having no choice but to go to sleep where they stood or where they, you know, because there was no other place for them to go. A separate issue though would be if then if, I guess, free from the Eighth Amendment restraint, the city then. Prosecuted that person, their lack of competency could then be an issue in the criminal prosecution that would result in a dismissal. And so. That is certainly a possibility, but it's also, I guess, for Lakewood or it's I don't think that that the issue of competency, it certainly wasn't what the Ninth Circuit was looking at in this context.
Okay, thank you. Get right with you. Okay. It further says that outreach personnel, that it is important that they be present during encampment removal. Do we? Have such outreach personnel?
Right. And so that is on the Levin case, and that has to do with due process requirements for removal of unauthorized encampments on public property. And. The outreach personnel, there are some resources. That that do that. But. The focus of that decision was really on the posting of. I noticed indicating an intent to clear an area and then holding on to the property and then. Allowing a person the opportunity to come and get it. I did see that in there, but in Michael, I'm not sure if you're super familiar with eleven holding, but I don't recall that presence of outreach personnel as being. A part of the due process analysis, but maybe more of like best practice.
I think it's, I agree. I think it's more of a best practice and we we. I guess I won't speak on what ability we have to do that right now, but in our, there's been a recently enacted policy regarding encampment cleanup. And that is more in terms of abandoned encampments, but it does provide for posting and the potential outreach also.
So. To echo comments made by other counselors. I can't believe. That we've been talking about this. For years and we have no mechanism to offer even an unused field or parcel. And a simple portisant. Two people who have nowhere to live. Is, I'm so sorry. Does this council have the power to create such a place on city-owned surplus land, for example?
So I might defer to Michael's presentation to some options that will be come before us with that.
His presentation is on options on ordinances on camping. If, I mean, and that's, I guess, I think if you guys as a group don't want to consider a camping ordinance. It's I was just going off. It's on our goals. And creating like a, if you, there are, if you look, this. Publication actually has sections on. Safe parking programs, authorized mitigation sites, micro shelters, hotels into housing, tiny houses. Oh, it's like if. The the council doesn't want, if the council wants to not do this, then, I mean, I'm just trying to. Tell you that those are on, that's what I'm talking about, like. The the camping ordinance is just one little piece. And but there are obviously other things. I mean, if you look, Bremerton's even on here on page forty five, like we got a nod from this publication for Pendleton Place. Which is like seventy, seventy bets.
If I could add to that, and that's President Kaufman, you you previously raised what our current ordinance says. So on its face. That the ordinance is potentially problematic. And so that. That's a big part of the reason to at least make some amendments to it. So that it is in line with this this newish case law.
Can I just?
Yeah, you stole the floor.
So is the answer yes?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Is, does this council have the power to create a a place perhaps on city-owned surplus property? Where such a tent city or the pallet housing that's being used in Everett. Does this council have the power to create that?
I think the council would have the authority to dedicate like budget funds to that. There's nothing currently in the council budget to do that. If you look at some of the.
Okay.
Examples in the publication, it gives some estimations of what the the cost of of running those programs are. But I don't think that. Like just instead of doing this within the next like four weeks versus like starting a new program like that, I think that would be.
I was just seeking the information.
I think it would be like a budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's go to. Michael.
Thank you. So I just, so I mean, this is the hard stuff that we have to deal with and we to to say we don't want to talk about it. I don't want to talk about it either. And, you know, we also have folks, residents and business community owners also asking us to. You know, solve some of these problems. And I also just want to make note that like. Bremerton's not the only place that's struggling with this, right? Like, this is not, this is not something that we've sort of. You know, dropped the ball on or something. This is something that, you know, is rampant in in a lot of communities. And more so in the communities that care about homeless unhoused folks. I recall, I just think I just asked this question a couple of weeks ago, that we did authorize like nonprofits to basically run, I believe, like a type of temporary tent city. And was that for like a hundred and eighty days or something? Yeah. So I mean, so that is a solution. Nobody's, nobody's stepped up to to take that. And maybe we have to look at that. But I mean, to not get too far in the weeds, we need, we need the, we're not going to solve in any meeting, any study session. We're not going to solve the whole problem. So what's in front of us right now is whether somebody should be able to camp. In a, in a, in a public park for twenty four hours. And, you know, we know that our current. BMC was saying no, and we know that our current BMC disagrees with the Ninth Circuit. So we're saying, okay. You know what? If you need a place to sleep, you can sleep in the park at night, but during the day, it's going to continue with its desired use, which is. You know, playgrounds and families and whatever. And it sounds like the folks could hang out in the park. They just can't sort of set up. Well, you know, that's not, that's not perfect if you were, if you're living in a tent, but it's, 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 I think, a decent compromise. And you know, again, we just have to look at the little piece of this problem that we're trying to solve. And really just focus on the the issue that's in front of us. And. There's, we do this sometimes where we we just start to try to fix the whole big problem and. You know, the scope tonight is is smaller. So anyways, it's hard, I, you know, I wish we didn't have to deal with this. I wish this wasn't a problem in our community. Anyways, so thank you for your time.
Since we've done a round on this, can I look for a thumbs up from counsel to let Mr. Reyes continue with his presentation before we do more discussion? All right. Yeah, we've done one round. So I. I'm looking for consensus to move on to presentation before we have more discussion.
I'd like to hear Vice President Chamberlain's comment.
Michael and Eric, could you there?
Yeah.
Thumbs down because it's the majority body.
Eric, Michael, thumbs up or thumbs down to hear Michael's presentation before more discussion.
The presentation, please.
Okay. I got majority. Yeah, let's get the presentation.
So, yeah, we thought it would be useful to look at what some other jurisdictions in the Ninth Circuit have done in response to this as well. So the first one and all the ordinances are in your packet. The first one is the city of Lakewood. And that takes the approach of. Putting up a tent, making a shelter area, camping, et cetera, is always prohibited in in certain areas. And that is what they have called protected waters. That's defined in their preamble of the ordinance. They also include a map that shows exactly where those areas are. So at all times, with no exception. And then further, further on in their codes, there is a section such on it. Well, essentially, it it bans camping throughout other. Public property within the city. However, there's a pretty big exception to that. And with the exception. And what the exception says is that enforcement will be suspended if there's no available overnight shelter that can be used by that particular person. So they also include a definition of available overnight shelter. That's pretty common in jurisdictions that use that method where suspend enforcement when there's no shelter available, they will almost always include a definition of what what shelter space or available shelter space will be. They, as far as penalties go in that ordinance, there, there's no warning here, but the penalties do increase as the offenses increase in number. So the first, for example, the first offense is there's no mandatory minimum penalty, but as it goes on to a second, third, and subsequent offense, it looks like there's a little bit of mandatory jail time as well as mandatory fines. So then another approach, the second ordinance, Longview, City of Longview.
I just want to take a pause right there just to temperature check everyone. So we went back to that, what I was talking about, the, the Ninth Circuit said that there can be basically time and place restrictions. Lakewood is an example of a place restriction. So Lakewood took the approach that there protected waters, which are places that were for critical habitat, wetland type areas that they were experiencing pollution related to illegal camping. It was harming those areas. So they took the approach that those were going to be off limits all the time without regard for whether there was shelter space available or not. Then every other place in the city was only enforceable, or everywhere other place that's in their code is only enforceable if there was shelter space available for that person. And that's where it gets to that element of it being in the choice or not to the choice of the person. And so this is, I, you know, was included just as an example of a city who did a location-based restriction and did and there, they chose critical habitats and things like that as the places that they were going to protect all the time from illegal camping with regard to shelter space. So I'm just like kind of summarizing it going in time and batch what I started with and looking at those things. And so, okay, next one.
So Longview would be the time restriction. So what they have done is between the hours of six thirty AM and nine thirty PM, no camping is allowed and they list a variety of locations. It's pretty extensive. Who's any park, any publicly owned or maintained lands, parking lot or other publicly owned or maintained area and also any city streets. So I, I think it'd probably be hard pressed to find any area in the City of Longview that allows camping inside of those six thirty to nine thirty hours. On top of that, they provided a storage property in that same area during those same times. So the practical effect would be that, you know, somebody can, can camp at nine thirty, they can start to camp in those areas. By six thirty AM, then they would have to move all their things out of there and move into a different location. So that, that would be the practical effect. The Portland ordinance, obviously not a Washington city, but it's still in the Ninth Circuit. And so that kind of takes a combination of all of those restrictions. What they do is they, so they also have hours that camping is not allowed. That is between eight AM and eight PM, but on top of that, they have a variety of areas that camping is never allowed in. The use restrictions they have, so they, and there's potentially would be a lot to go through there, but it, it, that page and a half, you know, press release from the city does give a pretty good synopsis of the changes that they've made. And they restrict things that are, I think that they deem that are related to safety, so open flame, human waste, things like that. They have a section on penalties that, so they're trying, what they're doing is taking a kind of phased in approach. Evidently, it's, this is, this is actually very recent, within the last several weeks. So as far as getting the word out on how this is going to work, they're doing community outreach. And then before any penalties will go into effect, there has to be two written warnings of the violation of ordinance. There's, it's not really specified how that would be tracked. So there's potential difficulty there. But like I said, I mean, that, that's a a good example of an ordinance that kind of takes a little bit from each type of what's out there and applies it to our city. So those are the, those are good examples of different approaches that jurisdictions have taken in response to this and unless Kylie has anything further to add, you know, that sort of additional questions.
Yeah, and my understanding is that the Portland ordinance, that if a person doesn't have an alternative access to shelter or housing because it's not available, then that person may camp, but they have to follow the time, place, and manner regulations implemented by the city. It's not, the enforcement is only when there is an alternative available, but even within that, the person is required to follow those time, place, and manner restrictions. And so that's fairly recent. And my understanding, it's been passed, I think, my understanding is that they took like five hours of public testimony before they amended their code. And it is supposed to, I think, start next month or this month, not next month.
I think starting outreach.
Now, I think it's outreach.
And the earliest enforcement will be in effect is the end of July.
And so, again, this is, it's coming to you because of the Ninth Circuit decision and that our current ordinance is anywhere all the time, never okay. So the, the least, I guess, and these are the ways that other cities are handling it. Another alternative would be to simply repeal it like we did the panhandling ordinance. And then it wouldn't be in our code.
So, yeah, we'll go to comments and questions. But yeah, I didn't want to reiterate it. It wasn't our goal and procedure that we all voted on to update this specific ordinance this year. And then the current proposal on the, on the floor is to go to a public, just a, that's not a public hearing, but to take public comment next week on this, you would, you would represent this to the public, we'd hear public feedback, and then we'd reconvene a study session to discuss more options.
Right. And if we needed another, I mean, it's on our goals, obviously, I think it's on everyone's goal either this year or last year to do this. So, and when I say everyone, like, most cities are addressing this, we're not unique in that. If you look, you know, Portland just redid theirs, Lakewood was two months ago, everyone's sort of doing the same thing. And so, but it is definitely, they, these, this is one, a change that's coming out with a lot of local variation.
All right, so let's go to Council Jennifer Younger first and do a round of comments, questions on both the proposed procedure and on this ordinance.
So, and I believe President Coughlin, Council Younger, when we met, one thing we talked about is the Ninth Circuit Court. It doesn't even say that, like, it gives, it doesn't even say you can have a blanket, or it doesn't even say, you know what I mean? Basic coverings. And so something, yeah, it's something that I'd like to see us make sure of is that with whatever we approve for, for our camping, that we include wording that's above and beyond the Ninth Circuit and allow some sort of constructible in whatever area we choose. Another clarifying point, Council Goodnow is that they cannot set up in parks. And Director Elavato will back me up on this. There's Parks Protection Act or something along those lines that prohibits camping overnight in our parks. So those areas are not available for camping. And I just wanted to kind of point out something that, that I, you know, just a simple search of these three areas, we have Lakewood, Longview, Portland, they all have houseless shelter availability, some with day centers, some with little tiny cabin, you know, cabins. I mean, like, you know, even, you know, close enough to Tacoma, I mean, they have, they have lots of options, maybe not lots of options in Longview, but there is an option through Salvation Army. So as we're crafting this ordinance, we need to keep in mind, we have nothing in our city. So we have no options until an emergency shelter opens back up for inclement weather. That is our only resource for shelters. So we can't necessarily rely on, it is, and I really super appreciate the research that both of y'all have done, Mr. Ray and Ms. Fennell, on humane ways to craft this ordinance, location-based, et cetera. But I, I do want to just kind of like, as we have this discussion, councilors, to just, again, these other areas have houseless shelter options right now, today. They have a place people can go to. So that's all, that's all I'd like to say about this as we think about it. Thank you.
You know, me bringing up the lack of availability of the bathroom for the folks out on MLK. Public perception is critically important. And my concern is if we do this, and I, I, I think we should do it. I mean, it's, it's, we need to do it and we can do it thoughtfully and craft a good ordinance, right? If we do this, however, at the same time as people are asking us, where's the bathroom? I'm embarrassed. I think it sets us up for some accusations of having our priorities in the wrong place. And it's easy, it must be easy to clean up an ordinance and really hard to get a porta potty. And I don't believe that's true. And if it is true, it should not be true. So this isn't for your department, Kylie. This is for the administration. Fix it. Fix it. Do something so that we can at least say we're doing something at the same time as we're doing some, if we do, and we're going to do this, it's going to trigger. I promise you. Just as I warned us about earlier, public perception about this, I, I know it's going to be there and rightfully so, I think. This is an area that I think the administration really needs to step up to. And if for no other reason than us saying it's time and we're not going to do anything with this until that is done. You know, it's, I, I, I'm feeling really, I'm for this, but I'm feeling really uncomfortable with timing and the energy that we're putting into it. I don't know what else to do with administration. You got them to do something.
Any other comments, questions? I'll go ahead and take my turn and, yeah, this is a tough topic all around. I don't know, we're, we're here not to do the easy stuff, but to tackle the hard stuff. I keep saying that. And I really do appreciate the public perception because this is a, it's a no-win scenario trying to tackle the issue of homelessness. We, as a council, are not going to solve the issue ourselves. It is a national, regional, hugely large issue. That said, I think we, we have identified some fantastic goals for our year in terms of affordable housing. We've allocated five hundred thousand dollars for affordable housing just recently. We've been working with KCR and partners. I think the council has put a lot of priorities there. I do appreciate though the specifically talking about the MLK area and toughness there. And yeah, as a council, we can do budget and some policy, but for the day-to-day operations work, that's the administration. I really like the idea of just going and getting, getting feedback from the public specifically on updating this ordinance. I personally will reiterate that, no matter what we do, it is going to make our current ordinance less draconian, put it that way. So no matter what we do, we'll be more friendly to folks experiencing homelessness. But yeah, I kind of really want to hear from the, the public, their thoughts, because I think we do have to make some really tough choices here. We have to get in compliance with the court. I think we do need some sort of ordinance on the, on the books, one that is enforceable but reasonable and humane, so.
Yeah, this is, this is an extremely difficult and uncomfortable topic, right? This is, we've talked about marginalized and vulnerable populations at council before, and this is the most marginalized, vulnerable population in our society, right? I think we were elected and appointed to do hard things and make difficult decisions and what is happening currently and has happened currently with the homelessness crisis, especially with cities just kind of taking a laissez-faire attitude to it hasn't worked. We have, you know, I, I've worked in downtown Seattle since twenty fifteen and I've seen what has happened there when, when city council and the administration has just kind of taken a hands-off approach. Businesses move out, services move out. There's a negative outcome for those who are not marginalized and experiencing homelessness. And then there's also a negative ultimate negative consequence for them as well. And so as we are thinking about, you know, where is this ten thousand for the bathroom that we have allocated? Maybe it should be council taking the reins, making the hard decisions and determining, okay, as a city with the resources that we have, with the population that we have, where does that make sense and which rules make the most sense to us? Because we have heard a lot of public outcry, but we've also heard public outcry from folks that are really negatively impacted by just kind of the haphazardness of where camp and campaigns have shown up. So I don't think anybody on this council lacks the empathy for the humane decency that I've seen come out of a lot of different areas in the country, including the South, where they ultimately just criminalize and hide folks for being poor. That's not what we want to do. And I think trusting a very robust process with community input. And it might take a lot of open community inputs. It might take a lot of study sessions to at least try something, but what is happening right now is just kind of so I appreciate legal letting us know that time and place restrictions are at least an option and tools that we have in our tool belt somewhat of a solution with the goals of helping community and the community for its houses. I don't, they have to get at odds. I think we can actually come up with some really good solutions.
Any other before I go to Jennifer for a second round, any?
Yeah, I guess I'll kind of soak it in. You guys know, I always do. So soaking it in, I'm just in here in public comment, but also looking at the ordinance when you have a chance to, maybe today or tomorrow, whatever, look at City Lakewood's their ordinance and where they are, the whereas, I find it interesting, we're talking about a, I won't call it silly, it's important, but a ten thousand dollar porta potty. City of Lakewood has dedicated one percent of its general fund to growing partnerships. So in other words, they're putting money in the game to, the government would be horrible to run anything dealing with, I'm sorry, but government's not good at stuff like that. I hope we are in agreement with that. Anyways, growing its partnerships with local nonprofit organizations for the purpose of improving this coordination of existing services, including programs specifically related to proven lives on house residence in the city. And then it says, whereas in partnership with Pierce County, in City of Tacoma, they allocated one million dollars to the Longform Housing Institute. So, you know, they're going to say, you know, they're going to say, okay, this is what we're doing, we still have a problem. And then you look at the ordinance and, and it's citing the case law, just like Kylie and Michael are saying, we've got an issue here, we've got an ordinance on our books. And effectively, I won't say, I'm not an attorney, but it appears it is, is not in line with the Ninth Circuit's opinion. And therefore, I, I have a sinking feeling that we don't enforce it at all, is probably our current policy. I don't need to have an answer to that. But in, in any case, the City of Lakewood is saying, so, look, we've de- dedicated this money and we've got an issue with the court. They kind of spell it out and they say, hey, we have some environmental concerns. They spell that out. Well, we have similar environmental concerns here. By the way, I, I assume we're all familiar with Lakewood. They are our comp. That's a military town. A little bigger than we are, probably about eighty thousand if I was gonna guess, a little bigger, but very similar socioeconomic demographics, I would argue, the whole works. So uh, you throw your Portland here, your wherever, Seattle here, no, Lakewood, Lakewood has done a lot of the heavy lifting. I'd like to know when this was passed. Michael, do you know when Lakewood was?
I wanna say, it was this year, within the last two or three months.
Okay, so, maybe a little early, but I'd like to hear some of the feedback of the Lakewood experience.
March twentieth, twenty twenty.
Um, to see how things are going. I know it's a little, but then I encourage you to go ahead and, and look at, because we're saying, oh, there's no shelters in the city. They talk about um the shelter availability where they can kick, this stuff can kick in as far as no camping in parks or whatnot. Uh, has to be within a fifteen mile radius. And at first you say, oh, that's too restrictive, you can't, but the city has to move them, take them there. So, and I, I think they thought this out pretty good. Now, I'm saying that, you know, don't, people don't come after me with pitchforks. I'm saying I'm open to this. It's better than what we have. We need to balance both sides, like people are saying. Um, and definitely, I think there should be more money in the game from the city. Uh, this, this talk about the porta potty is, is serious but almost comical, really. She, I was gonna say something, but I'll refrain from saying that word. Anyway, um so that's my thoughts, like, we need to do something. So we paid the big bucks, do something. Uh, and we do control the purse, that's why I mentioned. Uh, money's gotta come from somewhere. Here, uh, you want it for here, it's gotta come from somewhere else, but you know, that, that's our decision, our purview as well. It's interesting. So, uh, I'll look at the other ones that you mentioned um in a little more depth, but I, I like Lakewood's. Uh, again, I'm waiting to your public comment and look forward to the discussion, but I really think you need to do something. You, you can't just say, oh, it's too complicated, oh, it's, you know, we don't even have a porta potty or whatever. And we can do some proactive things like Lakewood did, and uh, we need to address it. It's my opinion.
You know, you have knocked on this round. So you can go for it.
So, I've looked at all of these different ordinances and um, I, I do think that government it is good at providing services. Um, this, this is my, has been my experience. And we are actually the legislative body of this government. This is not very quickly because it's not completely germane, but we need to figure out a way to set aside money and some mechanism and not wait until November when it's already starting to get cold. Back to the ordinance. Um, I look forward to hearing public comment and I look forward to this council incorporating public comment into the ordinance, um, not just checking the box. The um uh, Councilor Younger makes a really good point about Lakewood, how comparable Lakewood is. I'd also like to point out the extreme i- in the city of Portland, the, the number of times that, and the, the protocol for speaking um, to people and giving them written notice and the repetitive repeating the action. Yeah, uh yeah, I sorry, I have nothing more to say.
Propose a quick second round, um, and then I'll look for thumbs up to go to public comment next week. So, um, Jennifer, go for it.
Thanks. Um, yeah, agreed. I think we should look at the Lakewood um ordinance. Uh, again, they have, they, they have an ongoing partnership with Salvation Army, um, which I don't think is always the best provider, but they seem to be the most common. Um, and I'd like to know, um, I do also believe that nonprofits um, can have a good handle on things. I'm not always a fan of uh necessarily the churches. But um, when receiving federal funding, there are rules that go with that, or even state funding. Um, I think I just wanna um kind of just let y'all know about a couple other ways that homeless folks get in trouble. Um, when uh, while camping right now. Okay, so it's not that it's completely not um being regulated. I think there is a little bit of squeamishness around it right now by the police department, but there's still two other ways that they're able to um regulate uh, illegal camping, um, which is uh, uh trespass. Um, trespass, so if uh folks are trespassing, uh, they're still being cited. So if part of their tent falls onto private property, that's one way that people are still currently receiving citations. The other way is disorderly conduct. So if it's daytime, which we don't really have an ordinance in place uh with times and so on. If it's daytime and they haven't moved along, um, and they choose not to, they choose to keep their, their tent up, then they can be cited with disorderly conduct. So these are two mechanisms that are currently being employed right now um, to regulate uh camping practices. And so that's something for us to look at too. Um, I think I just want to make sure that we have not only just like public reg- regular public comment, but also um that we're able to um have some kind of technical assistance that we provide to somebody, to an organization like the Real Team. So they can continually give advice on how a new ordinance will be implemented and where people can camp. Um, and so partnering with these organizations, I think, is a lot more impactful than our Public Works. Uh, our police department, they have very specific jobs. I mean, they're, you know, like, they ha- and thank you, Public Works, for providing some sanitation services, right? Like, you're doing some cleanup and super appreciated. Um, but um just as we move forward, um, again, one thing that I want to make sure of is that people can have a friggin tent and that um they're having, that they're given, that we receive some sort of like, at least some sort of collaboration with an organization like the Salish Brew with the Real Team. Um, I think this is probably gonna take a couple rounds of public comment. Um, we might even be doing, we might even be working on this ordinance until inclement weather happens again. Um, and until then, um I mean, I don't know where people are gonna go, you know? Um, the last thing that I really want to say is that I do appreciate being reminded that right now we have an even more restrictive ordinance. And so, uh, I'm not necessarily a person that always cares about public perception, uh, which maybe I should, I don't know, but um the way that we really need to promote this is that our ordinance is extremely restrictive, puts us in a liability and that what we're doing is not creating a more restricted environment, but a less restricted environment for our house's individuals. So, thank you. I appreciate all of you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, uh, thank you, Councilman Younger. I've now looked into that uh Lakewood uh proposal or ordinance and uh how do we get a million dollars into that ordinance to give to, right? And how, if, if it's written into this ordinance, that one percent of the general fund goes to coordination of services and that a million dollars is going to these organizations, um let's do it. Let's at least talk about that. That should be on the table, any part of these ordinances that you proposed would be fodder for conversation. I'm not saying we do it, but I'll sure, it would sure be more palatable to me. I mean, Lakewood's got it right, written right in there. It's beautiful, the way they balanced. You know, that, uh, an ordinance usually doesn't, at, at least in my experience, it doesn't do that. It says, you're gonna, you know, do this, but this actually has the support built into it. So, I'm, I'm excited about it now.
Yeah, I, I agree with your enthusiasm. Uh Director Riley, what is our reserve balance right now? Percent, okay.
So, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I, I agree. If we are going to do this, like, we can't just be like, nope, we, we don't wanna see folks, right? Like, we need to create um some sort of funding or some other solutions um along with it. I think we're able to do that.
Sure. And one of the things that um, and this, just to kind of, if you look on page um one eighty-one. Bremerton is actually already featured in this, and so this is the type of thing that would be in our whereas's. Not saying that we can't add more, but just saying that this would be something that um, what the city did here with the, the partnerships um, to create Pendleton Place, particularly for our chronically homeless that have addiction and mental health issues. Um, would be the type of thing that we could list out in our whereas's that has already been implemented. The same thing with the council's allocations and the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for, um, we have a, a lot of different, different partnerships. There's the Respite Center, there's, you know, there's, there's, there's a place to put those things as well as anything that, that, any new partnership, the things that get listed. So I don't have all those written out yet, but we could certainly include it, is what I'm saying, and that this is the type of thing, if you want to look at, like, how this could be worked into the whereas's, like, stuff that we've already done.
You, uh, done Quinn, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any other comments, questions for this last round? Okay, I'll, I'll close out by, um, yeah, I think it, I think it is good to reiterate that a lot of the positives that that the city has been working on um in terms of both affordable housing and addressing homelessness. Um, like, there's always more we can do. I also cognizant in the back of my head that Bremerton is the poorest per capita city in, in Kitsap. Um, and we, we are home to the majority of folks experiencing homelessness. So, I feel like we, as a city, with the least means available to us, provide the most. And so, I would also like to reach out to the other cities in the county to see what support we could get. Um, and the, the state as well, uh, and ideally federally, but you know, that's not gonna happen. Um, but the state as well, the resources, um, for us as well. So I just want to keep that in the back of my mind, um, that Bremerton can't do it all by, by itself.
To that point, I did want to add, so I, I speak to the Lakewood City Attorney fairly regularly with friends and um in, in, one of the things that came out of um the most recent Ninth Circuit decision was about whether or not um partnerships among like cities and counties and cities and other cities um, were sufficient for whether shelter space was available. There is some language in that case that states to, makes the comment city limits. And at first people were really concerned, because there were already municipalities that had formed these partnerships, were contributing funds, but it was, the, the shelter space was actually technically, you know, not in their city limits. And I can say that, well, um, we don't have a definitive answer on that. It seems that most cities are now taking that as what's called dicta and not particular to that holding and that those are okay. I know Lakewood's partnership on the Lehigh, and it, it's mentioned in their, their ordinance. I believe that that um shelter space is actually in the city of Tacoma, so they partner with Tacoma. It's the, the partnership between Lakewood um, City of Tacoma and Pierce County. Um, but the actual location is within um the city of Tacoma. And so, they have taken the position that that is, I guess, like, we're close enough and within their region um to be counted as one, you know, okay for expenditure of public funds. It's helping their population as well. Um, but it goes to the discussion earlier about partnerships and things like that. Um, that I don't think that, at least most cities are now, not, is, or, or they're treating that as that those are still okay.
Alright, so we'll take uh public input next week on, on this item, and then reconvene for the next study session and continue the discussion. Well, thanks so much to, to both of you, um, for really diving into this and presenting it to council.